It's Thursday, June 9th, and it's 7:00 PM. And this is the Town of Marty, Town of Auburn's Planning Board Meeting. And I'm opening the meeting. Would everybody please stand and salute the flag?
The allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being televised and recorded. Is there anybody in the audience recording? And we will turn off our cell phones. All right. So first thing on our agenda at 7:05, and it's not 7:05 yet. Why don't we do minutes then? Get those out of the way while we're waiting for 7:05. We have the minutes of May 26, 2015.
So I give Eric three typographic. Could I make a motion to approve?
Okay. Do a couple typographic. Motion has been made to approve for the correction of typographic errors and second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote. We could go right down to adjournment.
Do the discussion.
Yeah, we got a discussion. Okay. We have a discussion. We have applicant Gordon Forsberg here with us requesting a waiver of site plan approval to allow a trade shop motor vehicle towing business on property located at 3 Jacobson Drive, map 28 lot 7. Mr. Forsberg?
Yes. As you can see on television in front of us, this is the property where I grew up, where my parents and I lived my whole life. My mom and dad, my father has since passed away just a couple months ago. And I have been left with the chore of managing this property. It's been for sale, officially it's been, this piece of property has been for sale for three years, a little over three years. Unofficially, but you know, for five years. But we've been trying to sell the property for five years. My parents moved away from the property two years ago, and where they were back and forth from their place on Cape Cod and their winter home in Florida. Because it's been for sale for so long, some, it costs a lot of money to maintain two buildings on 12 acres of land. And we didn't have any rent really coming in from this commercial building. The building was the business of my parents and the business of my sister who had the retail part of the business. And my parents had the wholesale part of the business, which occupied the entire commercial building. With no tenants in there for two years and tax bills over $4,000 a quarter, we needed to get some rental income. And we found the Envy Candle people who were retailers, and they moved in about a year and a half ago. And it has been a nice relationship with them. Nick is from Auburn. But with bills piling up, tax bills, we presently, we don't have, we don't owe any taxes, we don't owe any money to anybody. But it costs a lot, like I mentioned, it costs a lot of money to operate this property. So we found two people, and we couldn't really find somebody who wanted a year lease or a three-year lease because the property is for rent. So we found two people that would be tenants at will for a monthly rental agreement. They, one has agreed to the front piece of, the front building, and another has agreed to the back piece of the commercial building. Envy Candle's remains in the middle. So now, these two people are not retailers, they're not wholesalers or warehouse people, they are shop people. And I was not aware at the time that we need, that I was in a code violation and that we need to, for the Town of Auburn zoning bylaws, that we need to establish the right kind of zone for a repair vehicle, which is not really, they're not really repairing vehicles, but they are towing vehicles. It could be deemed that, I think that's a good, a good way. And then the shop owner in the back who owns an underground...
Can you show us which buildings are yours?
Yep. There are both these buildings. This is the commercial building. That's the building where I grew up in. But this is the steel building. This is where UCX is. And I have those, I have these if you'd like to...
No, we have that.
Yeah, you have that. Okay. So UCX is the new guy. He is an underground construction expert who works, he's a contractor for Comcast Cable. So he lays all the underground pipe for lots of different companies. And he has vehicles, they're going to be parked along the side of the driveway here. And then this building, this square here is where the Envy Candle people are. And then in the front, you can't really see it because of the tree there, but it's the gift shop.
Is that the A-frame one?
Yeah. It's the little 24 by 24 building that's attached to the A-frame with a little side building right here. You can see the roof of it. And those are the Lucky 13 Recovery Company. They are a repossession and recovery place and pick up vehicles that banks repossess cars and what have you. So they, they are there now, and we want to make sure that there's proper parking plan for these two businesses and...
Do you intend to rent anything else?
No, no sir. No, that's, that's it. I'm, that's, that's what we're proposing. He, the Recovery Company plans to put up a chain link fence which will come off the side of the, of the building here underneath the tree. And it will come out 80, from the building, 80 feet, and then come across 40 feet. And that's to the, to keep the cars, and this fence will be on the, so you know, so that he will be able to have this fenced in area on the pavement. Because that's what his insurance companies need from him in order for him to stay in concert with his licenses and agreement to run the Recovery Company that he runs. We may extend the fence further down and come across because it does have to be secure. And then, you know, but it's understood from one of my meetings with Matthew and with Mr. Moody, Caleb, that no vehicles would be parked on the grass. That's just a no-no. We've got paved material. And that goes for the UCX building too. You know, because this winter time, we had no place to put the snow, we had to literally move snow piles onto the grass. And that made for some difficult, one of the most difficult winters I've ever had here, being the manager of the property. But we did have some cars on the grass and that, I think, flustered a few of our residential tenants perhaps. Or I don't know if a complaint came in from maybe the architectural people. I've never known them to have any issues with us because we've never, you know, we've never blocked off anybody there, so.
Because I do have pictures of things on the grass.
I think it's been alleviated.
Yeah, I was down there the other day.
These were the initial conditions when I think, prior to the building inspector issuing his, his letter. But I believe that Mr. Forsberg has remediated that and taken the cars off the grass, or asked his clients to do that.
Absolutely. Yeah. We had to...
That other piece in the front garden that you're going to go down with the fence, that's grass at this point, right?
This here?
Yeah. No, no. From the corner of your paved path to the corner of the building, that's grass in there, right?
This is grass in here.
Now, what are you going to do with that?
I'm not going to have anything, I'm not, I'm not going to pave it or anything. I'm not adding any more pavement, hence the reason for my waiver, that this is, there is no new construction going to happen, other than just erecting, the Recovery Company has proposed a fence to be put up on the existing property. And I'm, I mean, at this point, I don't have any money to put in pavement and, for that matter, crush stone. But I think...
You have to put the fence, if this should be on the asphalt, not the ground. You have to put the fence because they'll just go beyond it. They'll be creeping, they'll have two cars doubled up between that and the brook if you don't.
Yeah. And you, and you think that even if they had like a trailer or, you know, something that was not motorized, they wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be accessible?
Not on the grass.
Right. Okay.
Well, that's, they're going to have to...
Normally we require oil and water separation, drainage in those, so this is something we've got to think about.
Oil and water.
There's a lot of cars there.
Yeah. Plus how many cars could be fitted?
In their wrecks, some of them could be wrecks or damaged, you don't know if they're going to be leaking and...
Right.
How many cars have been proposed for a 40-foot by 80-foot area?
Well, I don't, I don't know. Right now, I had, I had asked him that there'd be no more than 30, somewhere between 20 and 30 vehicles on the property, meaning 20 recovery vehicles, 20, I mean 25 recovered vehicles and perhaps five of his own employees' vehicles. I mean, employees have to come, there's several people that work there. They need a place to park too. And hence, well, you know, I've kind of outlined some of the parking that I thought would, would work out for everyone involved.
This is a considerable operation going here and expansion from what you've had in the past. And, you know, it just needs to be definitive. We have to know, and someone's, Matt, does he have to go before this left number? Do we determine how many cars they allow on the site and within the paved area?
This use is kind of, it's new to Auburn because it's a repossession use. It's not motor vehicle repair, it's not salvage. So we don't have an exact definition for this use.
And it's towing and salvage. It's towing and storage.
How many parking spaces fit in that area?
That's what I'm calculating right now. One more moment, Tim, I should have one here.
Nine by 18.
Say about, say about 21.
What are you figuring to math?
I got 21, that's 40 by 80 if that, and that...
No, but what are you calculating each space at?
Each space is...
12 feet.
Nine feet wide by 17-ish.
Should be nine by 18.
Yeah.
So that's the... But in this area, they're not going to be striped spaces, they're going to be cramming as many cars into the fence area as possible, right? So they're not, it's not a typical box.
Right. But some of them are repossession, so, you know, they're not all damaged, people are going to be...
Don't forget.
It's going to be like a valet lot.
Don't forget. Not all these are cars.
Right.
There's some big pieces here.
Yeah.
There's a trailer truck here, front end of a trailer truck.
And a box truck.
There's a box truck here.
That's, he's going to move, that's being moved, the trailer, I mean, the, the box truck.
It would be nice if we could trust everybody to do what they say they're going to do, but you know as well as I do that that's never going to happen, okay? So like Mr. Brooks said here, you know, we need a definitive parking plan.
Right.
And we need to know how many parking spaces are going to be for each one of the businesses there and where each one of the businesses are going to park their cars. Now, if you're saying that this business alone has five employees parking, and what about the candles company? How many does that have?
They have two.
They have two. Now, what about the, what about the new towing business or the new, the other business on the other side?
Well, they, the UCX, they have, they have five employees, six employees.
All right. So there's a 12 people anyway.
Now, is the candle...
I mean, at the most, you know, I mean, at any one time.
Is the candle company retail?
They have, they, they're, they are wholesale and retail.
And retail.
But they're, but they, they're not a shop per se. They're a, they're, they're a wholesale manufacturer of candles, you know, and...
But there's a retail component.
And they used to have the front shop as their little showroom and a, and a retail shop. But they don't have that anymore because there's no business for them and they couldn't afford, couldn't afford to keep the shop and have their manufacturing place too. So, and you know, I'm, I'm the, you know, I think when my parents thought about selling this place, with every, with every car dealership on Route 20, they really thought, you know what? This would be a great place for a car dealership. And Lundgren Honda has looked at the property and so have other used car places. And if, if these car places, if they're in the car business, I just thought, you know, if everybody in the car business on Route 20 has to, somebody, they must have had to go through a parking plan and get issued permits and get the right zoning.
And they have to get the legal sized parking spaces.
Yep.
And they have to have drainage under the cars and they have to have lighting.
They have to have a separation unit, oil separation.
Right. Well, that's, I would imagine if they're, they're performing, you know, repairs, sure. But this is not a repair shop. This is, that's, that's, it's not a repair shop. This is not a junkyard and it is not an auto body shop. It's not a repair shop where the engines are coming out of cars.
We understand that.
Yeah. And, and I'm just, you know, the...
One of the reasons...
I'm in the...
Well, you would want clear definition of what is allowed there yourself if, in case you had an issue with a tenant and then you could say, hey, it says 28 cars or trucks.
Yep.
Or on the other hand, you had somebody who came and wanted to buy the property, then they, they want to know what it is and what's available there as well.
Wouldn't that, that would be, that would be wonderful, that all, that, that... So we jointly put together this plan that said, yeah, I mean, somebody, we can move forward with this piece of property because I don't want to be, I don't want to put, I don't want to be put out of business. I still have to pay $8,000 in taxes the rest of the year and 16, 17, 18 next year. So with no buyers in sight and...
So the reason this is before us today through the chair is because the waiver option was seemingly the quickest and the easiest way to at least approach the board for discussion. Given there's no increase to pavement and there's no increased building. So it gets in front of the board for its review and the board can simply review this project and decide whether it needs its full filing or not based on some of the criteria of the use and its design. So that's why it's here today. And Mr. Forsberg, myself and Caleb met and decided this is kind of the first step to decide what, how to get this into conformity.
And what did you come up with?
It's the board's decision to decide how the, how they feel this plan based on its use, parking, site design requirements, the fence, paving, control, enforcement of those things into consideration, whether you want to, this to go for a, a site plan approval or if the waiver request is sufficient.
I think if we don't have a clearly defined plan, it's just going to be helpless.
So if the clear, if it were more clear, like if the parking, if the parking spaces were assigned, I've tried to put in my, in my, in my sketch here, 21 parking spaces.
I see the 21.
And, and two of them, you know, two of them are assigned to Envy Candle's and the others are assigned to the other buildings which they have the most employees and the most amount of vehicles coming and going from, you know, the UCX guys probably have 10 vehicles at any one particular time. So that's why there's a parking, there's so, there's parking spaces for those, for those vehicles.
They could park in a warehouse?
Pardon me?
Would they park in a warehouse?
Some of their vehicles go in the warehouse, yeah. Yep.
I guess the way I would look at this is typically parking spaces are done on a, you know, spaces per thousand type calculation on square footage. Usually it's either three or four. Based on the square footages here and the 21 parking spaces, he has 4.2, not including the restoration yard or the, the storage yard, which I think is relatively, it's actually a little bit higher than is sometimes required by zone.
But admittedly is 10.
Actually, this is 34, not 24. So I mean, if it's, yeah, I think it's another thousand square feet, so.
Sure. That actually hurts your argument a little bit, but then, but, but all the same, that's still relatively within the normal line. My, my issue is more with the placement of the fence and the fact that it's going back over the grass, which I think just invites for them to spill over onto that.
Oh, no. I would say the inventory area has to be clearly defined as that. Only in that area is 712 square feet or whatever it might be of inventory space. You can put whatever you want in it. If you can fit a trailer truck in it and, you know, four box trucks, then you don't get any cars. But that would only, we need to clearly define this. It's, it's all over.
I think the...
Well, it's probably more like 2,500 square feet.
I think I'd be more comfortable if the, if the fence line was to follow the pavement and then maybe connect to the building instead of going back over the grass.
Well, you can square it, you can...
It's going to, I think that grass space is going to get used, you know, similar to laying it out like that.
The reason why we did that was just, you know, for, so that there's not like a fence going into the building. We wanted it kind of coming off of the building rather than off of the doorway.
Yeah.
If you know, off of the, and it just, I mean, technically you could, you know, you could, you could square it off the, if you squared it off the, off the A-frame, then you're, you're only talking about a 10-foot span going out. And if that's what you decide, that's, that's what you decide. We just thought maybe squaring it off. But I understand where, where the board is coming from in terms of there, you give them an inch and they're going to take a mile.
And that goes for all the way down and, you know, the other side of the driveway too. You can see from the photos that they're already parking on the lawn, lateral, instead of lined up along the pavement down the side then.
Right.
So it might require a fence there as well or some kind of deterrent from them moving onto the grass area. Ballisters or...
Jersey barriers.
Yeah, Jersey barriers.
Regarding the waivers requested, there's request, the waiver of site plan prepared by professional on the air, including the elements of landscaping, lighting and topography and drainage. Just for the record as well, Mr. Forsberg's here, your thoughts on those items and whether they're needed for this sort of use?
Read them again, Matt.
There's topography, lighting, landscaping and drainage.
There is light, there's already lighting there, but it's...
Topography and landscaping, I, that's my point. I think we need...
It's a yard.
You got 21 parking spaces, you said, that are designated here?
Yes, sir.
And there's, when you added them up, I counted either 11 or 13 employees. And it's, it's, it's got to be at the maximum condition because that's what we have to account for.
Yeah, I would say there's the two owners and two other people, I'm going to say four, five, six, and, and five in the back that I'm, that I'm aware of on a daily basis. I don't go there all the time. So if you said 11, I would say that's probably fair.
Yeah, I would say 15 would be fair.
Well, just, just to add to that, the parking regulations are based on a number of employees in addition to what John said, the square footage of the building and in this type of use, actually all three uses, it's 180 square feet, square feet per space in addition to the employees. But that's retail. So, so this business, the back, UCX, doesn't sound like they're actually helping customers. That may not...
They're not retail at all.
Doesn't sound to me like any of these are really retail operations.
Right. No.
Well, the fact is that they got just base 12 employees, 21 spaces. We'll just say it's 12, even if it's 12. So there's, you know, already nine, only nine left. And I think we need to clearly define what space. You may go back and look at it and your towing and recovery guy might say, look, I want 3,000 square feet. And that's going to have to make you pave something else and whatever you work out with him. We need to have a plan and say, and then we'll say, okay, we're okay with that, but that's inventory space. And because they're going to have to think about this because, as I said, if it's towing and recovery and repossession from banks, not all those cars are smashed or damaged, they're just repossessed and they're not going to want them jammed tight to tight or rammed in with everything else.
Well, they, I, I, this is not, I would, I don't know this for a fact, but they don't bring every single car that they recover to this particular lot. They have other lots in the city of Worcester.
No, but obviously they need, what happens?
They like this because it's, it's on Route 20 in Auburn.
They need, you know, they think they need 12 spaces and then you end up, you'll fill up 30 if you have them.
Right. But I only have so many spaces assigned for parking outside of their lot. And some of them are...
See, that's when they start, you know, if they get more employees, they'll be on the grass, they'll be all over. I think what you should do, okay, personally, here's what I think you should do. I think in lieu of the fact that you know what we're looking for, I think you should get a definitive drawing or rendering of what exactly is going to happen here with the amount of spaces versus the fence, where the fence is going to go. I want, I would bring that, I would bring that back to us. And if we, and if we don't, if we don't see that, if we don't see that that's going to satisfy the needs, I think you're probably going to have to go for a full site plan approval.
Right.
And one thing you need to consider is being that it's right adjacent to the flood diversion control tunnel water is depending on how many cars are going to be there is that there might have to be some kind of oil and water thing in the...
Yeah, well, I have a thing...
And drainage. You're helping to protect yourself there too because you don't know what they're going to bring in.
There's a, I believe you submitted to the conservation commission.
Yeah, I have a meeting tomorrow night with Sheila.
Yeah.
And, and she has said to me that, you know, I've sent out all the butters notices, but she seems to think that there was something, that this, this came up, an issue a number of years back with retail parking. I mean, when, when we had a sale at the shop, you know, we could have 50, you know, 50 people in there. It was like we had to have a police officer out front directing traffic. But she didn't think that there was going to be much of a problem as far as the diversion canal went for this fenced in area.
The only other thing is...
Tell it, put it right in.
Yeah. The only other thing I just want to point out, and I'm not sure exactly where it is going, you might know. I know there's some easements here for the sewer connection and I'm not sure where that is in reference to the fence. Some underground utilities of water. I know we went over that.
Well, yeah, the, the city of Worcester has a sewer line going right through our property and so does Tennessee Gas Line on the other side, but it doesn't affect...
It's none of them, yeah. I just forget where it is. I think we have another...
It's actually down in here.
It might even come up on some of them.
There's a, there's a, there's a pole that's right, right about, right about here, right where that, over your cursor. And it's, you know, 10 feet and it's basically a vent pole. And then there's a manhole cover here because the sewer line comes down like this.
That's where it is.
And it goes out and around and it goes back out and it goes towards River of Terror. And it goes out and around and it goes back out and it goes towards River Terrace. So it comes out and around.
So, I mean, that's just something to note for your tenant, if, if this were to go through, that if they are putting a fence on top of it, at any point they need to repair that, they would rip their fence.
Yeah, they wouldn't, the, the fence is not going to be, well, it's not going to, the fence isn't coming out this far. The fence is going to stop about here and cut this way, although that's the proposed plan.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that, bring that up to the board.
Normally we would require a site plan, but if he wants to do what Jimmy says and we, and you want to do it as a preliminary next look, we can do that and then after that, if it doesn't satisfy us, we need to, we're not, we're not trying to pick on you. Like to see the.
No, I, I just.
Flourish and you get it rented and help you pay for it and whatever it is.
Yep.
But we, we need to do things in a certain fashion here to protect the town and, and everybody else that does business.
So really the only, what I have not, what I have neglected on this piece of paper of what you need is you need the fence area rather than on the grass, but on the pavement and that's really what you're.
You need to designate what area on the fence, on, on the asphalt is going to be for inventory storage.
Well, you say on the pavement, okay? If you're cutting that pavement in half, yeah, the fence is going to be on the pavement.
Yep.
If you're using the border of the grass, then you can put the fence, okay, just over the, over the, the top.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And, and the dirt alongside. The only thing that you, like Ronnie said, the only thing that's going on here is we don't want the cars driving onto the grass. Well, if you've got, at the point where it divides, if you have a fence there, they can't drive on the grass.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so that takes care of that.
And then, and the other, and the other parking spaces that are on the, that are here are not for recovered vehicles. They are for employee parking and/or visitor parking.
And what it sounds like is they would like, to the board, I don't want to speak for the board, but they'd like to see that breakdown in, say, a box somewhere on the plan that shows that it meets the minimum requirements of our bylaw for parking for the number of tenants and this and the square foot of retail area. That's on the plan, that's something that could be referenced for enforceable reasons in the future. So I know that's, that's something to.
I see over 22 cars. I see over 22 cars right there.
Right. Yep. Yeah, this is, there's a, there are, there are, are too many cars on, for, for what he's going to have when he has the fence. None of, these cars won't be able to be inside that fence because there's going to be assigned parking for either employees, UCX.
That's why we need, that's why we need what we asked for.
Yep.
Okay, and if you can do that, I mean, we'll take a look at it again and, and then we'll come up with something.
And, and, but that's really what I have here, you know, and it, it shows all the parking spaces right along here and right along here and, but I'll, I'll re, I'll, I'll do it again. I'll rework it.
I think having that box that shows, and again, I don't want to speak for the board. Having that box that shows the number of employee spaces and you can use letters to, to show the A through H or whatever.
Okay.
Number of space.
And the number of space, but note that inventory parking is, according to some of our car dealerships, is different than the minimum requirements of parking. It's not calculated the same way. So inventory parking is, is separate, so you couldn't include the inventory parking to contribute to the minimum requirement. If that makes sense. All right, so.
Right, the required number of spaces.
Correct.
Not inclusive of.
Well, if that's the case, where's UCX park? Where are their parking spaces?
Well, I haven't assigned them. I could.
Well, that's why I'm saying this isn't, this isn't really, this isn't really any good.
It's got to be a little more.
Well, it's got to be more detailed.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing you on the, I am, and I will make sure that each space, parking space has a identifying marker.
That's good. And we can quickly look at it then and just make a determination, you know, whether that's going to be good enough or whatever.
Yep, and I'll redo the fence plan on the pavement. All right.
Let's see what Concon has to say.
Yeah, that's, we should have some.
They say you have to have a oil separator.
Well, you know, if it was just general parking and that was like 20 cars and just somebody coming in to buy candles and do stuff like that, that'd be one thing. But when you're going to bring recovery vehicles in, like I said, some will be new, but some might be crunched and smashed.
Right, I think the big thing tripping this discussion is that use. It's just that particular tenant that you've assigned for this property.
And we would probably require around it, you know, maybe a cyclone, some kind of a, a.
Chain line.
Not chain line.
Right.
Something with either closure in the slot so that the cars aren't just bewed by, you know.
Yeah, he, he, that's what they, they have to do that.
Stockade fence on.
They have to do that. It has a green shutter, the green shutter's in between the chain line.
They can do that.
He has to do that. Yeah.
I just want to bring this to the board and, and your attention, I'm not sure you know this, but the tenant for the, what, what is this business called? The repossession business? Is it Giff Shalay?
13.
Oh, 13, I'm sorry.
Repossession recovery.
So they have called our offices several times asking when they can put up a fence because of the liability reasons you mentioned for their business and their insurance and stuff. So they're putting pressure on our department, the building phases to, to put up a fence. So just so you're aware and the board.
I am.
Just let them know, do, this needs to be accomplished first, you know, for them to do that.
Yeah, because you can come back with something and if we might not be happy, you might, I'm not sure if you shouldn't just look for the site plan and avoid coming back in two weeks and then saying, oh, we need to have it. It's just too much undefined. And if you can take also a shot of the chalet building underneath the tree so we can at least see what the front face looks like.
Okay. Any other questions for us? Are there any on the board?
No, any, any other questions or comments?
You mentioned some other people as you come in to the right of the pink A.
Architecture.
And the building there.
Is the house occupied?
You can't see it now. Is that, was that your?
Is the house occupied?
Yes, yeah, my son, my son lives where.
Which one are you talking about?
My son lives where my, and there's a, another family that live upstairs. Yep.
So that architecture building on the right.
Yep, the architectural fireplace, architectural fireplace is in here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, is that your building too?
No.
But it's, oh, okay.
Nope, nope. This is my building. I think I have tenant up here and my son lives down on the bottom.
Maybe the lady upstairs.
So, all right.
So the board entertain a motion to reschedule for next meeting as a discussion.
Okay, well, should we entertain a motion that we reschedule this for next meeting for more discussion?
I'll make.
Is it going to be ready in a week or?
It'll be the 23rd.
23rd?
Unless you need more time, Gordon.
No, I don't need that. I, I'm, I'm going to be ready.
The deadline for submission is next Wednesday.
Because we have to have it a Thursday before the meeting.
17th. The 17th to 2:30. So they need, any new materials by the 17th to 2:30. So we're, a week from tomorrow.
17th, 2:30 in the afternoon?
Yeah, that's just like we did before to get on that.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
All right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. One second.
We'll see you on the 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. Obviously a lot, obviously a lot to that one, so, no, it was important to put it in front of the board and advance the file.
That's a nice piece of land there.
It is.
Okay.
I think there's usually the reason. There's a brook that comes down too. Comes down around in the back and goes into, yeah, yeah. Oh, it's on the other side.
Yeah, it wraps through the back. There's a, it's almost surrounded.
What's the main reason? Selling nice pieces is not the easiest. You know, the main reason?
I don't know.
How about price? They just put land wrapped.
Yeah, it comes up, it just wraps right around the front of the dam. Yeah, that's Concon's looking at it tomorrow for the, it'd be interesting.
What did the, did Caleb get a complaint on the property?
Several.
Or they come back out and go up and see. There's no residence around there.
I think it was more.
Business.
Pass the lie or.
Yeah.
Who knows?
What I like to pass the lie. Because, because I looked at it and I went, who was going on there? Okay, so what's next?
You can make a motion to continue the next three hearings on the 23rd.
Yeah. Should we do them all three at once?
Sure.
All right, a motion to continue the next three things till the 23rd. Motion's been made.
The next three hearings.
Second.
Applicant, welcome homes.
Applicant David Pappas and applicant JW in Development, continue to the 23rd.
Yep.
Seconded.
Welcome homes, Dave Pappas and JW. Okay, made and seconded. To continue with all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
One discussion thing, just so everyone is aware, the applicant for West Street, Mr. Pappas, the, he filed his preliminary plan first, so his deadline is shorter. All right, that 90-day period has actually passed, but because we've been keeping up continuances, stamping them in, we're still good there.
We have to be, we can't make.
Can't mess that up.
We can't mess any of this up like that.
Absolutely right, absolutely right.
Because then they get constructive approval.
Correct. So we've been keeping up with those, any continuance could stamp in, we're, we're there. I just would like the board to consider requesting, or having the applicant request an extension of the deadline over a longer period than three days. It's just as an example, if they were to appear at our next meeting on the 23rd and they didn't want to continue, the board would have to vote that night because then I believe there's only 10 days left from their stamped in continuance.
That's a, that's a good idea to do, sir.
So if we.
Oh, yeah.
Ask them to request an extension of the deadline, more than 30, say 90 days, that would cover us in case they didn't want to continue.
Well, you should always vote no too.
And then you vote and then that decision has to get drafted and signed within the rest of the time period or else you're not constructive approval. And that might require you guys to come to the office and sign it.
I'm just saying, if, if you were held at, say like that, when we've been the ones extending and extending and extending with any of these applicants like Welcome and all of those people.
Correct. So that's one way to mitigate that, you know, the request and extension of X amount of days.
So you want to make a motion and, and vote on that? Is that what you want to do?
I believe it may be good to, yeah, to do that and ask me to draft a letter.
All right.
Make the motion to have you do that letter.
And to extend.
X amount of days.
They request an extension.
Yeah. Do you request the applicant?
Get an extension.
Request an extension.
Of the deadline.
Of the deadline.
Would you recommend 90 days?
90 days.
90 days.
Oh, because it's been going on for so long.
It's been since.
Yeah, but it's not us on all of these. We're not the ones continuing them.
Right, and that's why it's still legitimate because we've stamped in their continuance request and all that, but there, there was originally stamped in on February 26th that deadline actually passed a couple of days after our last meeting, so this becomes now cumbersome.
Is it the one with the five lots in and around the wetland over in that area?
It's only been in front of us maybe two or three times over the period. And there's case law to support that constructive approval really doesn't happen. It's so long as the applicant and there's continuances and everyone, everyone's still on the same page. So we're safe there. It's just the extension would put us in safer ground.
All right, well, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's the vote.
Okay, thank you. And FYI out of the board, the deadline for the Windmill Estates subdivision is August 22nd. They had 135-day process because they didn't file preliminary, so there's more, there's more time left though.
Do you want to request more time now anyways, just so we don't forget?
And that's, this is a pretty decent amount of time, about 10 weeks.
Left?
Yes.
What about Welcome?
That's special permit, so it doesn't have a timeline.
Speaking of special permits, this is the signature for TD Bank?
Yeah, I signed that already.
I just need, someone missed this meeting.
I didn't sign.
Okay, one of you guys wasn't here.
TD Bank, I was here.
Okay, so Ron wasn't here. So I just need Jim and Wendy, please.
TD Bank doing the team over at the now, it used to be year one. Year one.
Probably going in there. They're moving out of the building.
Yeah, I guess the lease is.
All right, so I have something for everyone. Yeah, actually might even like this one, so. Here are your standard conditions. Take them on the best of them.
And laminate?
Yes.
Didn't see that. No meaning. Find that money.
So it's your choice, I can either keep these every meeting and then just pass them out, or you can take them home and be at risk of not bringing it to the next meeting. But I wanted to show them to you because last meeting where I wasn't here because of the board's selective commitment, I did add a couple of things that I found on some other standard special permits, special permits on the reverse side on page two. And I know you voted to accept what was there, but I would like the board to consider some of the other standard language on special permits that I got.
Now it's laminated, can we?
You can change it, but I was very confident, so. That was.
You didn't make one for yourself?
I did.
Oh, you don't have it?
I do. It's right here, I just wanted to make sure, sorry. Thank you.
What do you look at that?
I added the recording of the Worcester registry. I added the requirements, the special permits under section 9.3. I also added condition three. Now, this isn't something we have to put on all special permits, but the special permit granting it there, in our cases, sometimes it's us, in most cases it's the zoning board of the fields, has the ability to restrict the special permit to the applicant instead of it. And if you do do that, the special permit goes blank. So in some cases you may feel that it's necessary to do that and that's why I put that, that condition on here. The, it's also number four I added on special permit, lapse of proposed use or its construction is not commenced within a period of X amount of month, months, that maximum could be only 24 months. Sometimes that happens where they get their permit and don't do anything. So this gives you a chance to regulate that. And I put the, uh, the earth fill section, number 9. And those were the changes.
Yeah, I don't like 3, but I'm not gonna make it re-laminated, we can just let it go.
So 3, it is a condition that will come up. It will add, in one way or the other. And kind of jumping into an agenda, I want to go for kind of a standard procedure for us. It's a good practice when ruling on decisions in the future. So if you're making a motion, I move that we accept or approve this project with standard conditions, and then you can go down the list, 1, 6, 8, and 9, and then we can just put those into the decision. And so that's why I kept it.
That's really a good thing, because a lot of these people get subdivision plans and all that, and then flip the property.
Right.
And then the next person that comes in, he has a whole different schedule.
Yeah, I know, but a lot of times, I get the schedule component, I just, um, I think a lot of times it's a pretty typical real estate practice to be have the kernel or be required, or be on the hook for permitting, to then sell the property. It's not unusual thing. But that's why I put it on there. It doesn't have to be chosen. Again, you could vote to approve and accept conditions 1, 2, 6, 7, and 10.
Sure.
You don't have to choose the ones that are-
When you say on number 3, Matt.
That's on the-
Right here.
On the other side, right?
Unconditional.
Yeah, oh, special permits.
Number 3. To the applicant, and is not transferred. Yeah, no, I like that.
There will, there could be instances where that comes up, and I wanted it on the laminate, so we don't forget about it.
Probably happened.
It could happen, it's possible.
Well, we've had some of these issues, and we think of them, and we say we've got to do something to make sure that doesn't happen.
Next time, now we've got to count so we can see it. That's why we did that. Okay.
You're gonna bring these for us each time?
I think that might be a better idea.
Yeah.
But I wanted you to see them, and if the board would like to amend their vote from last meeting, that would be appropriate, if you'd like to do that. To accept this addition instead of the previous.
Alright, entertain a motion that we accept the amended laminated.
What do you want to call them?
List of conditions?
Standard conditions.
Standard conditions.
Don't make that motion.
Has the motion been made? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's the vote.
Thank you. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll just go down the list. Got four discussion items that I've added one way or the other. But the first thing on here, I'm not gonna get too far into this, but I'll ask you first, Ron, because you were on the board. 18 Grove Street subdivision came to the board in 2008. It was, Grove Street's off of Stone Street, and it was a gentleman lived at the end of the road.
Road, house on the right.
You got it. And he wanted to do two houses off the back part of the car, added a cul-de-sac. And we deeded off his one parcel which had the house on it, and then never continued. He got hit by the market in 2008, so never developed this project.
Yeah, they wanted to, we were gonna let the-
Which one is this one?
This is 18 Grove Street.
18 Grove?
Yes.
Now, why, does this come back?
You went so much to finish it.
We have a different, it's, uh, we'll get back into the history. The person who applied to the subdivision passed away in 2013, and there's no desire to continue this project. So a new third party came to us with an A&R plan, trying to eliminate the cul-de-sac and the two other lots, and just make one contiguous part.
One of the questions was, across the street there's a house Farrell, I believe is the name. And the land ended or something, we were gonna put the cul-de-sac right there. They would have to fill a little bit in the end of the street, I believe.
A lot.
To put it. But we were gonna let it be done the easy, there was something, I know someone I can ask, it's, because they were gonna be involved in it maybe, where it wasn't gonna- Someone else here wanted it to be a big significant thing, and we could have got in a little easier and done it like that. We went and looked, you may not remember, but we went and looked and talked about it, and we were okay with the way that that person suggested. Not the real significant.
So the, uh, we had Eric, myself, the town engineer, and Joanna met with this A&R third party today, and his attorney, and gave them kind of their options. Explaining that the reason this subdivision was done in the first place, because someone was trying to develop that lot, and at the request of the planning board and the town engineer at the time, who came up with this design. It's at the end, it's at the end of the street, and they want a cul-de-sac for turnarounds, maintenance, all that stuff. So the applicant is gonna go back to the drawing board, try to decide if he wants-
There was something about it, we were willing to do the lesser thing, because the fire trucks and everyone else had to go down there anyways, because our houses already existed there. We may have talked about it.
I was down here the other day to look at.
If he's gonna combine these both pieces of property and just bake one house lot, is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
Right, but there's the component of the already approved subdivision-
You cannot approve it.
That's still there. So the, and that's the thing. So the rescission gets tricky, because if you rescind it-
Yeah, there was something about it.
It really gets complicated, because the rescission would have to follow almost with an immediate A&R. And then it may be at the case where the applicant is gonna end up trying to develop this piece, and may end up having to design something very similar to what's already approved. So he needs to decide if he'd like to carry out this already proposed, approved design, or go his original route. So that's back to the drawing board, and I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, because it may come up in the next meeting or so, where we have an A&R application, and the board may need to vote to rescind previous while accepting an A&R.
Couldn't you just build a house on one of the lots and buy the other lot, and just not develop it, and be a buildable lot if you wanted to sell it eventually, but-
Maybe, but I don't think he wants the cul-de-sac.
He would need the front.
He'd have to build a cul-de-sac.
He would need the frontage.
The town engineer-
Well, this cul-de-sac is going in onto his property.
Right.
It's not the one with- Right, but it's, and you got your frontage too. But it wasn't the one, there were, at one point there was a suggestion that they come here, you know how it falls off and goes down to the railroad tracks?
Right.
Okay? That they make it there, and they would have had to fill. This is at the same grade as the rest of the land, more or less.
Right.
In order to get the correct amount of frontage here, on this lot, they had to come in here. And that yellow portion, okay, adds to the frontage and gives them the correct number of- On this lot? Frontage in order to build that lot.
Yeah, that's right.
See that?
The first lot-
He may have to do, he may have to do that anyway, right?
The first lot wouldn't be affected, because it was released via the covenant, and Mass General supports that. If it's released, then it's not affected by a rescission.
Yeah.
But it would still have adequate frontage, even if that cul-de-sac was removed. It has about 120 feet without it. But as just to John's point, if they just wanted to develop lot 2, without the cul-de-sac, you would lose that frontage completely. Because only lot 1 has the frontage at this time.
You mean if he wanted 2 and 3 to be 1?
Right.
And just, and the cul-de-sac comes out, and then he's, you're saying he won't have enough?
No, he doesn't have enough. There.
Lot 1 is not even in the equation, let's just wipe that out right now, because it's already sold. It's just the blue and the yellow.
So if you take the cul-de-sac out, from here to there, isn't enough frontage? This guy's got less, and he's got enough.
Not on lot 2. Unless he-
Well, the yellow, the-
The white side is saying it's gonna put the 2 together. Right, if you put the 2 together, the frontage should be sufficient.
Sufficient.
That's correct. But here's the thing, lot 3, on that proposal contained a massive drainage issue, and that was part of that original plan. So if they were gonna develop at the back end of it, that just couldn't happen.
So couldn't you do an amendment to the subdivision application?
He would then take on that subdivision and have to post a bond.
Would you amend and remove the cul-de-sac and combine the 2 lots?
That would be up to the-
Up to the board to approve.
But I'll tell you right now, that would go against the town engineer's recommendation again. Ultimately up to the board, but the town engineer would like to see a turnaround for even allowing snow, emergency vehicles and all that. So that was part of the original proposal in the first place.
Yeah.
But yeah, so it's, the applicant's got a lot of thinking to do now, now that we brought all this to light.
They could always turn around and millbury it.
What's the width of the street there? It's not very wide.
It's not very wide at all.
It's probably 18 feet.
Yes.
Yeah, not wide at all.
The road-
14 to 18.
So you couldn't even turn a, plow around right there.
The road virtually, well, it ends about 10 feet into the proposed cul-de-sac, and then it's just woods, and it tore up. So.
You need, I forgot at the time, you need to, to make it good on the path that you had to compact and asphalt, you know, that's maybe 20, 30 feet out, but you'd have to go 60 or 80 to get it, to get you, you know, to bank it and support it.
So, yeah, there was a lot to this. We've had several meetings on this one so far. It's pretty interesting. So the, with the covenant, it states that if the road work isn't done by, I don't remember, 2009, that it's, that the plan is automatically rescinded, but the board still has to vote to accept that. So depending on the applicant's to try, decides to do-
See what he says, and then we'll vote from there.
So it's, yeah, there's, there's a lot here, and it may require Henning's assistance, but I just wanted to bring it up now.
Yeah.
So that we're aware of it when it does come.
Next.
Okay. Sorry.
We beat that one to death.
I'm sorry. Alright, this one I hope is pretty quick. I handed out some things for Cumberland Farms.
Yeah, we're throwing over Cumberland Farms.
On the original site plan for this, passed in 2013, I think everybody was here for that. There was a request for a box for no, no block, can't block the area.
Yeah.
Alright, and I wasn't around for this, this is more of a question for group. That wasn't built, and I believe, town, in meeting with Bill Coyle and the town engineer team today, they thought that the painted area would become almost a painted island, and state's description of that is you're not allowed to drive on those. So I think the board's intention was one of those boxes that says, do not block, the box, I've seen them in Western Mass. But those are for traffic mitigations, for other streets and entrances, not private businesses on roads. So it's a little different, and that's why the DPW decided that the applicant wouldn't have to do that. Brought it to our decision, because not only is it on the approved plan, it's also a condition of your decision to have that box.
Yeah.
So, DPW-
Yeah, well, the DPW doesn't have any say on what's inside of this, but DPW doesn't have any on-
Alright, but this box was gonna be in a street.
Oh.
So the condition read that they would work with the DPW to establish the best way to create the do not block box to help mitigate that situation, but they determined that-
You got a picture of one of them?
Can we just do a sign?
There's a sign there, and-
There's a little bit more, there's a little bit more than just that, this lot, by the way.
There's a very small sign here.
Yeah.
And there's a tree right at the complete block.
The sign's already landscaped. If you, can I, can I see this for a minute? See, originally when this was designed and we approved this, okay? We approved this specifically, so that trailer trucks would not come out of this lot onto South Street. They were supposed to come in from Route 20 and leave on Route 20.
Right.
They don't do that at all.
No, they turn around in that empty lot across the street, right?
That-
They go right through the coffee shops.
You know something? Again, that's why they've got to be told, or there's got to be some way, that when the trucks come in here, that they can't go out that, they can't go out that. That was, that was a big issue. That was a big issue. That they were coming out and going through that Frank and Nancy, is that still open? Yeah. But I mean, I thought we did something that was gonna eliminate that.
There was, there was something about, there was something about the entranceway, where it was going to go. And the entranceway was moved.
It wasn't conditioned to not allow trucks. It was designed in the plan, I'll have to check, but-
It was absolutely designed in the plan, they submitted an exhibit to show that the turning radius worked.
Was worked, yeah.
That's right. And that can be construed, that can be construed as, as a condition, as far as I'm concerned. In that corner.
Yep.
I don't think we can.
Well,
Just because it's not on-
I think we ought to find a way to make it work.
Well, I mean, even if it's part of the minutes and it doesn't make the decision, it's still, it has to be on.
What's the status though, Matt, now? I mean, this is already, they're operating.
The reason this came up is because there was a citizen who had someone, just almost had an issue.
At some point, we ought to test something like this. I think we should, especially on this one here. I mean, they specifically told us when we were here, that they were gonna come in off of Route 20 and leave on Route 20. There was not gonna be any trailer trucks exiting that property onto South Street.
That's right.
And because of your concern about the Frank and Nancy restaurant, and the way that the trucks- And I questioned him, and questioned him about it, and guess what? Now they're coming out on there, so. Well, they were going out, going through their lot, I think you said, and right onto Route 20. There's no doubt about it. Not turning and never coming back on South Street. And if they do try to get out of there and make a turn, and it's a 38-foot to 40-to-50-foot box, they take up 3 lanes to do it.
I hate to say it, and again, I don't want to hammer this on, but if it's not a condition of the decision, it just becomes an enforcement issue with the police, and it's kind of the planning board's hand.
Can you look at the plan?
Yeah.
We have 2 issues here though. One is the truck issue. The other one is the fact that they didn't do the box, which we did give issue.
I think if you ask Cumberland Farms, okay, I think if you talk to somebody at Cumberland Farms, and you said, "Look, how far do you want to go on stopping trailer trucks from exiting onto South Street? How far do you want to go? Do you want to go by the letter of the conditions, and you want to, do you want to fight the town on this? Or would you make some, a concession for the better of everybody, and, and say, do what you said in the first place?"
I think that the town would need to build a case first, and we've only had 1 person come in with a complaint. If we had enough volume to support that and have the back-
Well, you got members of the planning board complaining. Just saying, we're thinking of rescinding their site plan approval.
For something that wasn't conditioned though, so I mean it-
Well, you need to look on the plan though, right?
Oh, it's, it's-
I thought you said you were gonna look, you weren't sure.
This is our screenshot of the, the site plan that has signs. And this doesn't show a sign forbidding trucks from exiting that area.
Boy, I'm surprised that isn't on there, because we talked about that though. You know another thing we talked about that never happened on that lot? We specifically told them that they wanted a, an ultraviolet-protected white fence. Plastic indestructible fence around the back and side of that property. And now I look at it, and I had talked to Adam about that afterwards, he says, "Oh no, we just made it wood." What's that?
So I will, and now that I think about it, Ron, it may be just a line item on one of the pages, says no trucks.
And we should be looking at the minutes from the meeting too, because we did beat that horse to death.
I just wish it was conditioned, because that gives us-
Well, if it wasn't, it was because of the town planner.
That's it. I mean, there were a lot of things that didn't make it into our final.
I think we gotta watch the town planner much more diligently.
Hey, you're telling the town planner it's got great standard conditions. Never gotten even laminated before.
Is that laminated?
But anyways, okay, so-
Okay, so that's, we're doing that.
Alright, what would the board recommend?
Well, we want you to go back and see what's, what conditions were in the plan.
So we didn't really address though, your question about the do not block the box.
Right.
So what do you, what do you look?
Was it intended that that box was gonna be painted onto the, onto the pavement?
It was-
As kind of a, don't pull in night.
It seems that way.
I can't envision what this box is.
Yeah, it was on the plan, and it's, and it's a condition of this decision, so it is-
So did they have a picture of it on the plan? In one of the pages?
And the town engineer is now saying we can't do that?
Yeah. The condition reads-
Yeah, like paint lines.
That the applicant shall work with the DPW to identify the most appropriate striping and placement for the proposed do not block the box area adjacent to the South Street curb cut.
It was really the fact that it was a concern about the amount of queuing from the light to the entranceway.
Right.
It's assured.
It's only like 3 cuts. About 3 cuts. Not quite.
And this is more of a question-
Now, is that Bill that has a concern, or the Mass Highway?
Bill's relaying the concerns of Mass Highway.
They wouldn't take the markers on anything. I wouldn't care, I wouldn't care what Mass Highway said. Who cares what they say? That's a private, that's a South Street, it's a town road.
Not Mass Highway.
Mass Highway.
Do they have any-
You mean Auburn Highway Department?
No, the State Department of Transportation. If you wanted to develop your own shit. So I think the intention for the do not block the box, I've seen those before, I think I know what you're talking about, but those, those are for oddly shaped intersections, like streets that have, that have tried, exactly.
Well, I have seen intersections that say, "Please do not block the intersection," and there's simply a line on the pavement that demarcates where they should be stopping. Is that an alternative?
Yeah, I, again, it's something that wouldn't be on the applicant to maintain, it'd be on us. So it-
Done there.
Not to say that we can't, right, if it's in the road, then it's on us to maintain it. Restripe it every year, and that works. So that's something to consider also. So.
Do we have any say about the sign that's there? I mean, could we say, "Look, we want a sign that has a big arrow that points down, that do not go past?"
With a flashing light on it.
It's a decent recommendation, the signs here, and it could be pitched to the, to the applicant.
Because they actually back way up the street, certain times in the day, there can be 10, 12, 15 cars backed up all the way to the light, and blocking that exit.
And hopefully when Mary Dee is offline, it'll stop. No, but, um-
Yeah, we'll just create somewhere else.
Town engineer likes the idea of the larger sign too. I mean, but then again, CVS has, as Bill pointed out, CVS has 4 do not enter signs to that one side of it. And people go up there anyways, you can't stop everyone, but you can't really see that sign because it's a tree in the way.
Oh, you mean coming up Golden Grove?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, we did, we did a lot of work on that, the Amos de God. You see him come off and walk and drive over here. Next.
But anyways. If it's okay with the board, would you, would need to recommend anything to the town engineer?
I would, I would suggest we wait until you check the other plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
To make any decisions.
And the minutes for discussions.
Carry it over to the next general.
All sources, to see whether or not you can find anything.
Okay.
Everything that had to do with that.
Okay. Fee schedule. I'm gonna pass these out. So with the new general bylaws, we have to, the Board of Selectmen has to review our fee schedule. I added one thing to this, because it's come up a lot with the town engineer. And it is under the subdivision fees, and it's the last item for stormwater inspection. That's the only new thing I've added here. It was at the request of the town engineer.
How much of the fee's gone up?
Nothing else has gone up yet. That's just a new addition to it. That's just a new addition to it. Otherwise, they were adopting the board of health policy for charging for deep hole inspections.
How do these line up with other communities of our size and population?
These are...
Has that been, have we looked at that?
I hadn't because these are, these are existing. I didn't change anything else from what we've had in the past, but...
You know what's changing is the stormwater inspection.
That's it.
That's what you're saying?
That's it.
So per deep hole means that if they have to do four holes, it, okay.
It's 300.
I was, I didn't have the calculator, so I can figure it out.
Did you vote?
No.
The only other thing, and early on when I started here, we talked about the waivers and maybe it being 500 per waiver or not. I think the more I, I see subdivisions and such, waivers seem to change throughout the course of a hearing and we'd constantly be asking for money and then find out that they didn't need that waiver and we'd have to refund it and it could get...
Well, how can you start it off?
Make it non-refundable.
Yeah, I just...
It's set at the end of the acceptance of the plan with whatever we're doing with them.
Be prepared to write a check at the end.
Right.
After everything's approved.
Or it doesn't get signed.
Period. All right, well, the board does have to vote on those waivers and at that time, but we'd be, we can't stop a decision until we receive a payment because there's strict deadlines on their decision, on a spiling decision for the close of a hearing.
Sit down with your boss, Eric, and try to figure it out.
I don't see on this, I don't, I don't see anything on this regarding the members of the planning board being reimbursed for their showing up every other week. That isn't on here.
You haven't been getting your check?
You're the only one.
I think it's following with Eric's account.
Oh, yeah. We're taking minutes.
All right.
He laughs about it.
So we're going to take some time?
One suggestion might be is, like you said, when the final approval comes in and then that's when, everything's said and done at that point and that's when the check gets written for whatever waivers.
Maybe a condition, yeah. So you tell them ahead of time, the lawyer or who's ever representing them, is you have your check ready and if you got three of them that night, it'll be, I mean, that is, I don't, I mean, you know, if, to me, if we're, if we are in agreement that the guy only needs one sidewalk instead of two...
Yeah.
Well, it's, you know, it's nice to get money, but are we like penalizing them because we gave them the waiver and saying 500 bucks? I mean, it seems like, you know, if any pay, it should cover any...
Well, then put a sidewalk on both sides and don't come in front of us and ask for the waiver.
Those cost more.
That's how the plan, right? That's how the bylaws.
I haven't seen so far a subdivision that hasn't asked for four or five and we've had three subdivisions. That the waivers would then become more...
Well, and on the other hand, the guy is saving the money by not, and it was on...
That's right, yeah.
I'm, I'm still fine with it being 500 dollars for all the waivers, but to help you guys with that logistical concern, I think we'd have to have the money before we voted it, right? Because then the clock isn't ticking on you. Is that what you're saying?
On, on us to render it.
So we'd have to continue it until we had full payment.
Okay, and so then if anything changes, we have to wait till final approval and then at one time, when you've got all of the answers, not check here, back and forth, you know?
Maybe it's take a separate check for, if it's five waivers, five $500 checks and you don't submit them until the end.
I don't know if I can.
I don't care about the baseball game.
Yes, a lot of procedural frames.
For baseball games. Well, then be talking, I got something we're going to talk about for half an hour or so.
All right.
So you're not going to see any game unless you leave, try to leave and I'm not going to let you, so.
Let's think about that one a little longer. I hate to table it, but...
Next.
Maybe come up with a few, you know, a few ideas and some options.
waiver requests really are larger than the actual plan itself.
Right. It could, it could get to that if there's enough waivers, so...
Five, what is, 2,500?
No, maybe you're doing something like 500 for the first and 100 for all the consequential or you should stick with it.
It's a good idea.
I just, I'm trying to think of the variables and what would give an advantage to the applicant if he were to do it where we wouldn't take the money right away, so.
Certain things if we were charging them for is, you know, you might say, hey, we're allowing them this or that, are we letting them use an extra piece on here that's something we normally wouldn't? Okay, so you kick back with something to us that gives it something to the town.
All right.
But this is almost a little like hostage.
Yeah.
It's not, not really like that, but...
Especially if 500 dollars.
Well, you can think about it two different ways. You can say...
Save in a bundle, or try not to have this, or...
Eric had a good recommendation. Just check with those other planning boards.
Yeah. Come back with some options, with some ideas.
Sorry, moving along, you had asked last meeting for some information on the Deer Run subdivision and the letter of credit and so I provided that information to you, the revised letter of credit, the letter from the town engineer and the cost estimate from the applicant.
So is the determination that we do need to act on this or don't?
From what I can tell, I don't believe we do. I think the way it read to me was the town planner would review this and based on the feedback from the town engineer, could make a determin, determination to reduce the bond accordingly. But I think this is more of an FYI for the board.
Okay, good.
That's good.
Okay, next.
We reviewed the standard conditions.
We did?
Yep.
We did deadlines.
Mm-hmm. That's just the correspondence, but it's up to how you'd like to respond to those. That's the response from town council on the planning board alternate members. It wasn't what we wanted.
Yeah, well...
So we would have to put something into our bylaw.
Well, that's what we should do.
Maybe we need another town council.
Yeah. Well, we should probably do that.
And I could.
Put something together just like we did for the ZBA.
I think so.
And get it on the fall town meeting.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I would entertain a motion that we put something on the town meeting warrant similar to what they did for the ZBA, requesting an alternate member for special permits on the planning board.
And I would second that.
I can't make it.
Well, I would make that motion and...
Okay, so motion is made, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining?
Last thing, I will be at the next meeting?
No.
Of course, it's, I'm just trying to think. I won't be at your next meeting and I'm actually leaving Friday. I'll be away for two weeks.
Didn't you say you had something you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I think I did. We already did that.
Oh, I thought it was something...
No, it's just, but I, I won't be here for the next meeting. I'll be out the next two weeks getting married, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Why would you do that?
I'm still trying to figure that out.
Congratulations.
We're still being taped.
Yes.
You're still trying to figure that out?
Just try to, if you need to have questions, please reach out to Eric or she.
Okay, so what else we have?
It's going to take you two weeks again, Matt.
That's it, that's it. I entertain a motion.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All over favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Going to, uh, remember.